I'm calling this meeting to order. And thank you very much to our incredible performers. It's been a while since we've had in-person performances, and we really appreciate the incredible music you just gave us. I would ask that if everyone would please rise and if you folks would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Thank you again. Can we have another round of applause? And if there are any parents of these incredible performers? Thank you again. May we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Matura?
Here.
Mrs. Greenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Bacon?
Here.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Case?
Here. Next on the agenda is approval of agenda. Dr. Bales.
Good evening. Items approved by consent will not come up for discussion during the meeting but will be proved when the agenda is adopted. This is possible since members of the governing board received the agenda along with backup materials at least 24 hours prior to the meeting and have time to review and consider all items. Prior to the agenda being adopted, members of the governing board or audience may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and brought to the floor for discussion at the appropriate place on the agenda. I would like to offer the agenda as posted.
Does any member of the governing board wish to move anything from the consent agenda? Does any member of the audience wish to move anything from the consent agenda to the approval agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Case, may I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We have our agenda. Next is governing board statements. Mrs. Brown?
Thank you to the PV students who are no longer here, but that was so fun to see. We used to have performances all the time, and so this is the first one in a while since COVID, and it was great. I have had some more fulfilling moments as a board member as opposed to what we've typically been receiving in the last several months. The opportunity to see students doing what they do, and it has been really satisfying. I was able to attend a mystery dinner theater at Pinnacle where the culinary and theater departments collaborate and do -- and the students were amazing, and I was just so pleased that the two departments came together. I also had the opportunity to participate in a marketing panel of professionals to offer some professional perspective to Mrs. Shea's award-winning DECA students for their business plans. And that also was just really neat to see students doing such challenging and interesting work in the classroom again, not to mention how impressed I am with just the teacher and the program and just the students in general. I was also able to attend another super impressive performance by the students at Horizon that the Broadway Under the Stars program has been widely valued and appreciated for years, and we haven't -- I didn't -- I haven't been able to go for a bit. And the -- I had the opportunity to see some students that I have known since kindergarten. It was an emotional time for all of us, actually, but there were students crying, some of the seniors who it would be their last performance, and I was just grateful that those students had a last performance where their families were able to come and see, in addition to some sporting events, a volleyball game where, again, you got to see students doing what they do. So I am super grateful, not only for the families and the students, but for the teachers. I've been searching for some ways to help support our teachers supporting our students, and while I continue to seek out that information, I would like to just say how grateful I am for the work and their commitment during this time. I would also like to thank a parent. A parent sent me an email this week making me aware of a disturbing book that was required reading for a class, and this book had been brought to my attention in the summer, and my understanding was that it was taken care of because the students had another option. And so that parent happened to be satisfied with it, and we moved on. I didn't look into the book except to know that it was inappropriate. This parent read the book and brought it -- some of the details of it to our attention, and I am horrified. And so while I'm super grateful that our current administration saw to it that the book was removed and created a new process, which I have always been impressed with the way that our administrators work, I -- it doesn't change the fact that students were reading this book. And as a parent, it absolutely horrifies me, and I just want to say how sorry I am that that happened and how grateful I am that the book was removed and that we had a parent who shared the information, was willing to share the information. We've had many parents, including the United Parent Council, and many, many other parents that have come and given us information and worked really hard for our districts and for our students, and we are grateful. I am grateful for that. Their work has helped our community and made part of our community. But in this case, it was a unique situation where I had known and I didn't realize how egregious the choice was for this book. And so, again, I just want to say to parents that find information that I really do appreciate your emails, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, to hear our students perform was a great joy for me. I have been -- it's one of the most amazing perks on being on the school board is that we have students performing, and that hasn't happened, and it's just a thrill to me. I guess the last two weeks ago, board meeting, the only time I could go to the performance was right after the board meeting. So I went to Horizon's Broadway Under the Stars. As soon as the board -- I just took off out of here because I couldn't go Friday or Saturday. So -- and it brought great joy to me. And since that time, one of the students who was a senior there was in our home, and she explained to me how much it meant for her, a senior, to perform. And I'm so grateful that all of that was able to take place, and I'm hoping to go to the performance tomorrow night at Little Mermaid at Shadow Mountain. So it's just great to have our students participating in normal activities again, which they should be, which is what's going on. I have to echo some of Stephanie's words. I'm appalled at what went forward, and I apologize to the students. I don't think that will be enough said, but receiving emails, and I did not know this book was as bad as it is, and I apologize that that went forward, and things are taking shape that this won't go forward again. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much. In a first, I'm going to ask the board to reconsider approval of the agenda. We actually got two comment cards, but it turns out that the items were on things on the consent agenda and for our -- for the individuals who'd like to comment, to be able to do that, we need to move them to the approval agenda. So I would ask that we re-vote on approval agenda. We will be moving items six and seven from the consent agenda, and they'll become one and two. Well, actually, why don't we do the proclamation and then move? Yeah. So they'll become two and three on the items for approval. Six will become two, seven will become three, and then we'll renumber from there. So number six on the consent agenda will become number two on the approval agenda, and number seven on the consent agenda will become number three on the approval agenda. Pardon me? Yes?
So I present the consent agenda with the exception of G six and G seven moved to the approval items.
Yes. So may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
The new agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and I appreciate the reconsideration. So next on our agenda, we have no awards and recognitions, so it is call to the public, excuse me. And because our meetings are made available to a virtual audience, Paradise Valley Unified School District has implemented a process to collect virtual public comments. Members of the public wishing to submit these comments to the governing board for this meeting were able to do so by completing the public comment form located on the homepage of the district's website. In order to be included in tonight's meeting, members of the public were encouraged to complete the form by noon today. It is important to note, all comments related to board agenda items that were received by today's noon deadline were provided to all governing board members and the superintendent's office in advance of tonight's meeting. These comments will not be read aloud during the meeting. We would like to thank our community for voicing their thoughts and providing comments for tonight's meeting. We received a total of one submission. Members of the public present at this meeting wishing to address the board on items not listed on the agenda completed speaker cards to be recognized during call to the public. Due to Arizona open meeting law, the governing board cannot discuss or take any action on items not listed on the agenda. We have 14 cards for call to the public. We have an additional two for agenda items, and so we will -- each speaker will have 90 seconds or one and a half minutes for their comments. We appreciate the input. Members of the public who have asked to speak on the agenda item, as I said, will be recognized to do so at the appropriate time during the meeting. We appreciate your input, but please understand the board members may direct questions or comments to staff or other members of the board. When I call your name, obviously, I will say your name, but also, please, when you reach the mic, state your name, your first name and last name prior to sharing your comment. The point of this and every board meeting is to accomplish the business at hand and to be able to do so openly and collaboratively. To that end, everyone attending the board meeting, whether speaking to the board or not, is expected to observe our meeting rules as well as rules of politeness, propriety, decorum, and good conduct. So I will, as I said, we will go to our yellow cards first. Dr. Fred Isles.
Dr. Fred Isles, it's quite a disappointment to have a picture show for three minutes and I got 90 seconds. So I have some pictures that I'm going to show you how each one of us can determine for certain whether or not the jab, you know, the vaccine, you know, is safe and efficient, effective for each one of us, because there's lots of controversy, and Biden said he'd follow the science, and we have people like Dr. Montagnier who says that people are going to die within two years if they take the jab. And so he says the actual -- the actual COVID-19 isn't, you know, is about as dangerous as the common flu. But the real bioweapon is the vaccine, and the vaccine's injuries is the Delta variant. Some people think the -- some people think that COVID, you know, they're all for the vaccine, but I don't know why people thinks, you know, it does so little to protect and it has so many, you know, VAERS, you know, vaccine accidents and so forth. And here's our governor, and so people should be fired from their jobs and so forth if they don't take the vaccine and have, you know, and they're really putting a lot of pressure on people to get it as if it's really important. And I'm saying, get with your doctor. You can find out for yourself for certain if it's efficacious for you. And ask your doctor to, you know, get her microscope out, you know, because in Japan, they had a -- the Ministry of Health found out that the vaccine was contaminated with all this awful stuff in it, and they wasted millions of doses, and then -- and is that my signal?
The next card we have is from -- it's from David Hickson.
It was great to see the performance tonight. It's unfortunate that they have to wear masks. I appreciate that you don't participate in this virtue signaling. You have your mask off part of the time, like when you talk, you know, it's -- this is just theater. When are you guys going to stop this? And you're doing this to our children, subjecting them to this. And now I hear that January 4th, perhaps, is going to be a deadline where your staff are going to have to get a vaccine. Are you going to stand up, stand up against this, or are you just going to go along with Biden and all the puppets that, you know, are mandating this ridiculous vaccine? I wanted to talk about some of the mission statements that you have on your website, Superintendent Bales, transparency in particular. I've brought up in prior meetings the need for there to be a frank discussion with the stakeholders. That's us, not the teachers' unions. It's us, the parents, talking about race, this garbage, and this sexual grooming that's going on. If you want to be transparent, you need to allow us to have a conversation, a roundtable, involve these teacher union representatives. I don't care. We need to do this. You know what's happening all across the country. This movement is happening. It will come across the country. We will address this.
Thank you. The next -- the next card is from Sandra Christensen.
My name is Sandra Christensen, and I wanted to thank Ms. Case and Ms. Brown for their wonderful comments. They're -- and it does bring joy to my ears and my eyes to see kids performing. My son was in Broadway Under the Stars, and he's a sophomore, and he was able to perform, and it was so wonderful that masks were optional, so thank you all for that. Dr. Bales, I wanted to talk about your very first meeting when you became superintendent, and I was really encouraged. You seemed to generally care about all the stakeholders. You even came down and talked to the parents afterward and thanked us for being at the school board meeting and that we matter, so I appreciated that. But with all due respect, somebody that matters, you have open communication with them, and you listen to them, and I appreciate, again, Ms. Brown and Ms. Case's comments, and so that was really nice to hear. Today, I went on the district website, and I looked -- I also looked at the goals and objectives for the school year, and your number one priority was on focus goal areas was to stabilize and invigorate stakeholder relationships. I'm a stakeholder. Taxpayers are stakeholders. I looked up the breakout, and I -- and we have 37 Republican, 37% Republican, 29% Democrat, 5% Independent, and 30% Unaffiliated, which includes Libertarian and Patriot Party, which means we have a very conservative district, and I don't feel that the Christian conservatives are being listened to.
The next card is from Tom Morton.
My name is Thomas Morton. My daughter's a junior at Horizon High School. I recently sent a letter regarding the book her teacher assigned her to read last summer. I may be going to read some passages later on if I don't run out of too much time. So anyone's listening at home and they're a child, stop listening in a few minutes. The response I received from my child's principal was inadequate and misleading. She said that there's no problem because they took care of this issue by offering an alternative book to read and because the district is putting together a reading list. However, when the principal sent an email to parents one month after the original assignment went out in which she offered an alternative book to read, she said nothing about why they were offering an alternative book to read and left the original book as an option. I received three replies via telephone that were great from district personnel today, and I'm facing all three of them right now, in addition to the two replies that I appreciate from board members tonight. But what I still don't know is why did district leadership become aware of this last July as Dr. Bales told me today? And not only did the principal not contact the parents about this book, neither did anyone at the district. Parents were left totally in the dark about it unless they read the book. If the district is putting together an approved reading list for AP and that this book or anything like it isn't going to be assigned again, that's great, but I'd still like to see some account of it.
The next card is from Angela Smith.
Hi, I'm Angela Smith. I'm a previous nurse for here at Paradise Valley School District. I have a kid in elementary, middle school, and high school. I am so disgusted with, yes, you addressed the book, yes, you addressed the book, but what else has been missed? What else? I can't read every single book that comes by my child's desk. I can't, I can't read everything. Who's held accountable? Was it the English teacher? Is it the school teacher? Is it the principal? Is it you guys? I can't read every book. I'm tired of having to second guess. SEL, sixth grade, Mom, they asked us three questions. It was A, B, C, D, and E, always, sometimes, maybe, never, whatever. How often do you play with the same group of friends? You know what the SEL instructor said? A is wrong. A was always. A is always. So you can't always play with the same group of friends? No. You don't want to know why? Because it doesn't make you a good person. You need to share your friends. You need to do this. How many of you didn't play with the same group of friends? I did. I did. There was nothing wrong with me. There's still nothing wrong with me. I'm a nurse for 17 years. I'm in healthcare for 20 years. I make great friends. Some I've lost. Some turned out not to be so great. But just because they play with the same group of friends, that SEL instructor's going to say always is wrong? Sorry. You guys need to step up. You guys need to step up. I have too much at risk.
The next card is from Eddie Jackson.
Eddie Jackson, actually, I'd like to say that I think you guys need to step down. I'm here to talk about quarantines. We keep hearing these stories over and over and over, and I wonder if any of you guys are even involved in this community where you hear these people talking about their kids are being quarantined two and three times now this school year. What are you guys doing? What are you doing? We lost 88 school days last school year because of the decision that this board made. 88 school days. That's half the school year, over half. And now you guys are quarantining kids again. Right next door in Cave Creek, they're leaving it optional to parents, but you guys are quarantining kids. Why? Because you're discriminating against the unvaccinated, which we've already heard from the governor's office, that he said you're not allowed to discriminate against the unvaccinated. That's specifically what you guys are doing. And what I find interesting, here, look up at this board here. You can see the war on parents. That used to be a full screen showing the speaker standing at this podium. Now it's a teeny little thumbnail. I'm standing right here. I can't even read the words that you decided to put up there about public participation. It's because you guys want to filter what the people at home see on those cameras. We had probably 200 people in here a couple weeks ago, and you guys panned the camera away from them. Thank you.
The next card is from Wendy Mahler.
Hi, my name is Wendy Mahler. And, Dr. Bales, I'm going to talk about one of your strategies to rebuild trust. I want you to be successful for our students, for this board, for the parents, for the district, for the community. One, to rebuild trust, put cameras in the classrooms. A view of the dry erase board is all that is necessary, or just a simple recording. The teacher can record the class. That way, parents can log in and see what the teachers are saying and teaching. And also, if a child is quarantined, they can be taught from home. Or thirdly, if a student needs additional, wants to review their items, they can do that. Two, do not mandate or comply with any unconstitutional COVID-19 inoculation. Coercion is not consent. Any book or assignment that discusses sexuality must have a permission slip home. Allow more time to vet the new math curriculum. We need more time. Make parents aware that there is a transgender bathroom policy in place. End the discriminatory quarantine policy. The CDC is not following the science. Allow parents to have in-person meetings with teachers and open the schools, and open the schools for open house where we can be personally involved rather than through a screen. The SEL counselor curriculum, it should be posted online for all parents to be able to see what the curriculum is about in an opt-out form.
The next card is from Jessica Landon.
My name is Jessica Landon. I have two children in the PV district who attend the same school. At the last board meeting, I discussed the ridiculous quarantine policies that this district currently enforces. I would like to note that after all the speakers had finished, Dr. Bales made a clarification agreeing with me that this district cannot quarantine students and that it must come from the Health Department. Up until today, these policies had not actually affected either of my kids. However, this morning, that all changed after receiving a phone call from their principal. She told me that my son would need to quarantine. She told me that my son would need to quarantine because of positive cases in close contact, although she wasn't able to provide any sort of details. I immediately informed her that she didn't have any legal authority to quarantine my son according to Arizona statute, ARS 15-873C, and that only Maricopa County Department of Public Health has the authority to quarantine students. If the Health Department wants to quarantine my son, official documentation will be provided, not some generic letter that the school sends home. I explained that my son has a legal right to attend school and receive an education because the Health Department has not said otherwise. I told the principal that my son will be going to school tomorrow in person, like usual, along with his little sister, who, for the record, was not asked to quarantine at all. After picking up my kids from school today, I received another phone call from the principal. She had apparently talked to the Director of Student Services of the district, looking for guidance on how to best handle the issue since I was not going to comply with the quarantine, again, because this is an illegal quarantine.
Excuse me, but your time is up. The next card is from someone named Brandy. We need you to state your first and last name when you get to the podium, please.
Okay. I may start now? Okay. My child's reading assignment was a book titled, "So You've Been Publicly Shamed." I'd go as far as to say it could be considered smut. It concludes passages where a man... Electric shock... This includes direct references to actual... ...and images online. Are the most frequent of all the profanities used in the book. There's a YouTube video titled, "Phoenix Father Upset Over School Reading Assignment." It is the TV news interview from yesterday by CBS Channel 3 on this topic. The district responded to the media and said that the students had an alternate reading choice. That is false. The original assignment did not give an alternate title. In fact, Horizon moved all traces of the original assignment, which was there just days ago. Now, it's replaced by that revised assignment, which was given a month after most students had already read the offending book. Had my child received this book from someone other than a teacher, my first thought would have been, "Who is grooming my daughter?" I don't know if this book idea came from Mrs. Jay Perisic or from Mr. Brian Morgan or from the principal, Linda Einat, but the judgment call here is beyond all my reasoning. These school officials had failed my family and failed my daughter, along with many other families and students. How many other sexually explicit books are assigned to our young teenage students? My coworker mentioned a book from...
Somebody does need to be fired. I am so disgusted with what is going on with our district. And with the exception of Mrs. Case and Mrs. Brown, you board members should absolutely resign. And I pray to God, Matura and Bacon are not rerunning for election. You have failed, failed miserably. I don't even know how you look at yourselves in the mirror. Do you not see what's going on? You refuse to listen. You clearly do not want to listen to your constituents, Greenberg. None of you do, with the exception of Case and Bacon. The rest of you are not listening to us. And what happened in Virginia is going to happen here at PV District. You will be gone. We will not tolerate this anymore.
The next card is Jennifer Croning.
Jennifer Croning, I'm also here to talk about the quarantine policy of keeping healthy students home from school. My 10th grade daughter at Pinnacle High School just finished her second quarantine because a student in one of her classes tested positive and her desk was within six feet. She's completely healthy. She tested negative several times throughout the quarantine, yet she's missed more than 10% of the school days this year, which is considered by Arizona law, excessive absence. This quarantine policy is causing excessive absence in healthy students. It's also creating extra work for our teachers, who have to constantly catch students up when they return from quarantine. They have to use their lunch periods to administer tests and quizzes and allow students to make up labs. This policy is not supported by any data that shows that its reduced spread of infection. In fact, administrators are telling parents that they estimate only 2% to 4% of students that are quarantined for close contact end up testing negative. So, there's no benefit to this policy, just a cost. And a cost at a time when Dr. Bills has told parents that student academic performance is down, test scores are not good, the district overall is underperforming, we're falling behind Deer Valley School District and Scottsdale School District. Get our kids back on the track. Journey to excellence. Keep healthy kids in the classroom.
The next card is from Denise Camber.
My name is Denise Camber. At the October 24th board meeting, I became aware that our district participates in the dangerous transgender bathroom policy that we are all hearing about. It is my understanding that a student can fill out paperwork in the office, allowing them to go into the bathroom of the opposite biological sex. I emailed the principal, vice principals, the governing board, and superintendent Bales. The response I received did not offer any real resolution. This is not okay. This puts our students at risk. We have all seen what happened in Virginia when a male student raped two female students in a girls' bathroom, because, again, the board hit it. Furthermore, our male students should not have to deal with a biological female coming into the bathroom when their personal business is out. It's hard enough being a teenager. Bottom line, students of the opposite biological sex, because that is science, should not be allowed in the restroom or locker room for the stated gender. Putting the masses at risk for a few makes no sense. A separate bathroom should be available for the transgender students. I understand that and agree. But their feelings should not be considered more important than the safety and well-being of the vast majority of our students. Perhaps if the focus was on the learning rather than political correctness and all this progressive garbage, our schools would improve math, science, and reading. Our children do not need to be taught that the word "mailman" is outdated and sexist term and being marked down on an English assignment. And this is being done by an English teacher at Horizon High School. Kids are marked down for using "mailman." And we...
Thank you very much. So, my name is Craig Legori. I live right next door to Pinnacle High School. My house lies right on the 50-yard line. There's three specific items that I want to go over with regards to the noise and the sounds that are being emitted from the football field and the lack of action that the school is taking to curtail the sound and their being very disrespectful to the neighbors. The first one, they'll do practice and their practice will start anywhere from 3:00 PM, 4:00 PM, 5:00 PM. And during their practice, they will sound a segment timer. No issues. At the end of every five-minute segment, a horn will go off. If it's a three-hour practice and the segment timer goes off every five minutes, that means 36 times while I'm at home trying to work, I have to listen to a [makes a loud noise] coming through my pretty recently put-in windows. So, that's the first thing. So, what I'd ask is that the school take steps to stop immediately that segment timer going off. The second thing is, I've communicated this for the past two years to the high school, you need to turn down your music. So, the way their speakers are pointed is that the acoustics actually are better heard in the neighborhood than they are on the field. So, what ends up happening is that when I'm at home in my house trying to work, again, I can hear such great hits as Ludacris' Superman That Ho.
The last card is from Rachel Prince.
My name is Rachel Prince. I'm an English teacher and the head of the English department at Horizon High School. I'm a proud member of Paradise Valley Schools ever since the 1970s. I went to Desert Cove, Shea, Shadow Mountain. My children are proud alumni of Desert Springs, Desert Shadows, and Horizon. My entire 29-year teaching career has been at Horizon. I have never, ever wanted to be anywhere else. I'm highly invested in the PV District. I'm here tonight to show my support of the Horizon English Department. They show up for kids every day. They've learned more new technology, more new methodologies, more new ways of reaching their students in the last two years than some people may do over an entire career. They dedicate hours of their time before and after school and over their weekends to be sure they bring their very best to the classroom every single day. They spend their own money to create classrooms that are inviting and inspiring to young minds. I've watched these teachers move mountains to reach at-risk students, to encourage hesitant learners, to comfort anxious students, and to challenge every one of their students to bring their A-game every single day. And they have, as have all teachers, been tasked with preparing students academically, socially, and emotionally for a world that they will face after graduation. And that grows more complicated every day.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is superintendent comments, Dr. Bills.
I want to also express, as Mrs. Case and Mrs. Bacon have our apologies, excuse me, Mrs. Brown, apologies, Mrs. Brown and Mrs. Case, my apologies for how this was handled this summer regarding the literature materials. I have confidence in our teachers, but we're not perfect. We make mistakes. And we will take steps to move forward in making sure that we communicate clearly to our community expectations. We'll provide training and we will hold each other accountable to doing so. So, I ask for your patience and understanding as we move forward. This is not an easy time for anybody, but we do take this seriously and will continue to do so in moving forward. I also wanted to share that, just to clarify, the quarantine issue is a very difficult issue, all right? And we do believe that the quarantine authority relies with the public health officials. And as identified, assigning children to quarantine is on their letterhead, signed by them. And I encourage parents to contact the public health official that sent the letter if you have questions or concerns. I also encourage you to talk to the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, who oversees the public health office. I have worked closely with those officials this week, and I believe that they have an interest in moving in a different direction. It does move slow, but I do believe that they understand the impacts. Superintendents like myself met earlier this week and described a very clear picture on the learning impacts as a result of this. It is not good for kids and we do need to move the needle on this. I also want to share that some other items in my comments tonight. November is National Native American Heritage Month, which pays tribute to rich ancestry and traditions of Native Americans and Alaskan natives. PV Schools is proud to be home to 193 registered Native American students. I'd like to acknowledge the work of our Native American liaison, James Fabian, and all the work that he does to support our Native American students and families. Next week is National School Psychology Week and the theme is "Let's Get in Gear." This week highlights the important work school psychologists and other educators do to help all students thrive. I'd like to recognize the valuable work of our school psychologists to continue to do what they do in helping our students. I'm also very happy to share some good news as a result of our relationship and work with the city of Phoenix. Recently, the City of Phoenix Council voted in their October 27th meeting to sell 2.8-acre property, part of the Shadow Mountain High School parking lot, to the district for $1. This upholds the agreement both parties entered into on April 6, 2000. A special thanks to Councilwoman Stark, the city council, and the folks at the city. Because of them, we were able to achieve a successful outcome, saving the taxpayer potentially several hundred thousand dollars or minimally expensive attorney fees. Ms. Barrigan will continue to work with the city of Phoenix and our attorney to complete the transaction. As the year progresses, we are beginning to get a better picture of what the budget may look like moving into the next fiscal year. That's 2123, or excuse me, 2223. Before sharing those details next month, I want to remind everybody of the aggregate expenditure limit that was recently published. In short, Arizona school districts are over a state limit for spending. And as expected, we're planning for a reduction of $35.9 million to our MNO budget, which was shared with us on November 1st by the Arizona Department of Education. That's a staggering number, representing about 15% of our MNO budget. Further details will be presented on this in the December study session and board meeting, including how the district will be navigating this unfortunate news. However, I'm optimistic and it is possible that the legislature will suspend those cuts for the current year. I have heard that Republicans in both the House and the Senate are interested in solving this, short-term, into the next year. We need them to address that. Can you imagine cutting $35 million in the current year budget? We know that if they take action, they have to take action by March, and we hope that they do so in early January to alleviate the stress that's caused with those kind of challenges. There are other challenges to the budgeting process that I'm eager to work through in the coming months. These challenges include current enrollment, inflation, and cost increases. I'm certain we'll find a solution together because we do work together well as a community. Before I wrap up comments tonight, I have some great news... Before I wrap up comments tonight, I have some great news to share with you. This year, we did some creative recruiting and were able to hire 15 international teachers. Through a collaborative effort between Human Resources and Special Education, we hired one teacher from Kenya, one from Turkey, and 13 from the Philippines, though we're still waiting on the arrival of one. This week, on Monday and Tuesday, the Special Education Support Team and our Special Education Mentor provided two full days of training to these very eager teachers. Thank you to our PVEA for welcoming these teachers by graciously providing breakfast and lunches. Our international teachers begin at their sites on Wednesday, yesterday, starting a new chapter in innovative staffing for PV Schools. Our own North Valley Arts Academy's theater program and the Shadow Mountain High School Drama Club have been busy over the past month putting the finishing touches on their rendition of Disney's Little Mermaid. There are several opportunities to see the show, and a ticketed online version will be available. Tonight is opening night, and to the cast and crew, break a leg. I'm excited to see the show later this weekend. For more information, visit NVADrama.com. Tomorrow is the annual marching band exhibition. Our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade band students will travel to Shadow Mountain High School to watch the show, which starts at 10:30 AM. This celebration will feature marching bands from each of our high schools, inspiring younger band students on their journey to musical excellence. There are many ways in which our students reach excellence, and this event definitely highlights one of them. And those are my comments tonight. Mrs. Greenberg.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bales. Next on the agenda is our American Education Week proclamation, which I'd like to read and then ask Mrs. Case for a motion to... I'm sorry. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bales first.
President Greenberg and governing board members, American Education Week provides a time-honored opportunity to celebrate education and spotlight how important education is to the health and well-being of children and our nation as a whole. I recommend the board declare November 15th through 21st, 2021, American Education Week in Paradise Valley Unified School District.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bales. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I will ask Mrs. Case for a motion to approve. Whereas, public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas, education employees, be they teachers, custodians, bus drivers, or librarians, work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas, schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore, I, Ann Greenberg, serving as governing board president of the Paradise Valley Unified School District, proclaim November 15th through 19th, 2021, as the 100th Annual Observance of American Education Week, proclaim this fourth day of November, 2021. Mrs. Case, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda, we will move to the two items that were on the consent agenda. So first will be the consideration approval of curriculum and instruction travel requests. Dr. Bales.
President Greenberg, governing board members, this recommendation is for administrative certified employee travel request to attend the Avid National Conference, December 8th through the 11th, 2021. We recommend approval.
Thank you. I will call the person who gave us the card, and then we will, we will discuss. Wendy Mahler? Again, it's, no, it's a minute and a half. No, we're, we do it as a whole, and so in terms of comments, it'll be a minute and a half.
Just?
It's the one, just for this.
Number six?
Yes, this particular item.
Okay, thank you. I am discussing the agenda item to pay for the teachers to attend the Avid National Conference. The goal of this group is to close achievement gap by preparing students for college readiness and success in a global society. They're a nonprofit that changes the lives by helping schools to be more equitable, student-centered approach. I looked online about this, and they claim to be the precursor to Common Core. Students must be invited in, and they have to have a, it teaches them how to be organized. And if they fail at this, they're told that they, that they should have tried harder. This program has not shown to have any difference in graduation rates or reading or math scores. It's also founded by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Michael and Susan Dell Foundation, the Dell Foundation, and Microsoft. Also, the National School Boards Association, the one that calls all of us parents terrorists. They are supporting the keynote speaker of this national conference. His name is Ramjet Sinhu. He's the Executive Director and CEO of ASCD, Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development.
Mrs. Case, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, yes.
Mrs. Brown?
I just want a summary of the, I, from our employees of, the benefits of Avid and the program.
Dr. Corson, would you please address the question?
Good evening, Mrs. Brown. Avid has been in place in a number of our schools. It's to support our students who often are first-time potential college students, oftentimes coming from economically disadvantaged families or families that don't have a family members themselves that have gone to college. And in addition to teaching them strategies, it encourages these students to partake in AP Dual Enrollment, Advanced Placement classes. And the students graduating from North Canyon have shown success going to college as a result of being in this program.
Does any member, Mrs. Case?
I've been in this district for a long time. I have seven children who have graduated from PV High School. And I remember talking to the counselor when my sixth child was in high school, begging her for my child to be in the Avid program. He was in advanced classes, but he needed to learn to be organized and to take better notes. I wanted that opportunity for him, and she kept telling me, no, he's fine. He doesn't need it. I kept saying, no, he does need it, because I have gone to Avid programs that have changed children's lives. It is not one of those crazy things out there. Avid is a concrete program which helps our students progress in their schools. I wish it was at all the schools where the students could learn how to be better students. I've had a lot of kids who've gone through this district, and I know this program is beneficial for the kids who have been involved. I've wanted my own child to be involved with it because he especially needed it. It is not something far out. It is concrete and good.
Is, does any other member of the board have any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is consideration approval to renew existing PV contracts. I will turn it over to Dr. Bales.
President Greenberg, governing board members, this motion is, or this recommendation is to approve and renew existing PV contracts. There are three: staff development leadership, locks, doors, hardware-related parts and services, information and technology services. These are multi-year contracts. We are in third of five for this recommendation, and we do recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Bales. We have a card again from Mrs. Mahler.
Hello, you're spending half a million dollars for this program. I didn't have time to go through all of these awarded firms that you're applying to. I just hand-selected a few, and this is what I found out. New Leaders Incorporated, they are a spying principals program, and they're for racial justice. The Core Collaborative Incorporated, on their face, on their page, on their, on the internet, we believe in social justice. The Peak Fleet LLC, persistence, empathy, authenticity, and kindness is what Peak stands for. They're for racial injustice, gender inequality, and political partisanship. I ask that you at least remove these from this, these awarded firms. And if you do approve this, do not approve this for five years. I ask that this be tabled and looked at more thoroughly. Thank you.
Mrs. Case, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All the, yes?
May I ask, how many of these services do we actually use? Do, can, does someone answer that? And are these just the approved list we worked from? But how many of these do we actually use?
Ms. Case, I don't have an actual number. We don't necessarily use all the services that appear on this particular list. And to my knowledge, the, at least the ones that were just mentioned, we do not have, we do not use their services.
So in the past, we have not used their services?
Not that I'm aware of, correct?
Okay.
I have a question. If, is the process that you use when selecting, you know, a vendor, what is the process? Is it, they can go through, they can look at the list, and somebody can look at the list and select, and then is it just that individual, or is there typically like two people that are, you know, like a supervisor and a department head that look at it?
Yeah, Ms. Barrigan, would you address the cooperative contract and the concept of this contract as well as answer Mrs. Brown's question?
Absolutely. President Greenberg, Mrs. Brown, it's, there are a number of vendors who can respond. And when we set out an RFP, or in this case, an interest in the cooperative contract where we work with One GPA, the agency, it will go out to multiple vendors. It's posted on the district website and various websites so that the best of the companies can be responsive to that RFP. In this case, it is reviewed by a committee of folks, and I can find out who, you know, reviewed these, if you would like that information. And then, in this case, also a number of firms were awarded for that. I wonder, Ms. Brown, if you were asking in this district, who decides when we use these? Or did that answer your question?
Well, I just want to, you said that there is a committee of people that looked at this. And then if, if one of them is going to be selected by, you know, for whatever reason, it's staff development and leadership training. So maybe a principal would need to utilize. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So then, in that case, when a principal selects from the, from the group, then is it approved then by, you know, another level up, like the principal supervisor, or, you know, an assistant superintendent, or et cetera? It's kind of more of what I, just making sure that it is, it isn't just an individual decision.
So not an individual decision in terms of which firms were awarded? I don't know, Dr. Corson, if you might have more information about the process that's endeavored through when, when our schools may select a vendor?
Sure. Ms. Barrigan and Ms. Brown, when our schools decide that they have an interest in purchasing, for example, supplemental curriculum material, they are in contact with our department, and we vet that with our curriculum specialists, as well as through their principal supervisor. And so collectively, we make a determination or recommendation back to that principal.
Thank you.
Mrs. Matura?
And just clarification, because this is a multi-year contract, it's something that comes before the board each year, but it has the ability to be renewed each year up to five years, and at that point, it is start, the process starts over again. Is that correct? But this is a one-year renewal, and this would be the third year of a five-year possible renewal process. Is that correct?
Mrs. Matura, you have that all correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Bacon?
Is there, is there a deadline for this? I mean, do we have to do this in a certain timeframe? Is this something we could table till the next meeting, do a little deeper dive on the information that's there? I mean, I guess I do have concerns about companies that we don't use being on this list. Why do we have them on there, then?
I can, I can speak to that. So when we do work with One GPA for various contracts such as this, the purpose of One GPA, and I'll actually speak to that, I believe, in a future agenda item for this evening, is other districts and other agencies will use our One GPA contract so that they can do their purchasing through that cooperative contract. So we will sometimes, you know, you be the lead agency on these things, as we will be on a future agenda item this evening. Or sometimes it's awarded so that districts have a list to select from. And that does not necessarily mean that every district will use each and every vendor on here.
So are there some districts that take some vendors off of their official approved list by, by a governing board? Like, or is it just the list is the list?
Well, this is the One GPA contract list. They could just choose not to use those vendors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Case?
Can, is there a timeframe for this? Do we have to vote on it tonight? Is there, does it need to be so that, like Mrs. Bacon asked, can we put it off for two more weeks and ask some more questions, or not?
The difficulty is, you know, I don't know for certain the answer to that. I suspect, based on, in my mind, the timeframe of where we're at this evening, we have our contracts very likely approved for this year. So I suspect this is for purchasing moving forward into next year. If not, I think we have the ability to ratify this list of approval in a future board meeting if the board feels comfortable moving this to another meeting. I think we could certainly do that, even if we did need it immediately.
I would like to have a discussion of which ones we want to use in our district. Whether, I know we're in a cooperative, and IGA and other people, we get it all cheaper because we do it together. I get that. But then from this list, couldn't we say, these are the ones we're going to use, as opposed to, a principal can choose any of these, and can we vet that further?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, we can do that. We can bring it back at the next meeting and identify which of these vendors we would use.
Is that something that our administrators that may, would be looking into this? Would they value the opportunity to do that? Or, I mean, is it?
Well, I, my answer is, is that we're going to vet them before we use them anyway.
Right, which is what I was thinking as well.
Right. But, I mean, if the board's more comfortable with us bringing you a list that identifies which on the list, the whole list is probably not going to change. But we can identify which one of these we've vetted and determined use for in our district.
So Julie, you would feel more comfortable with that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I would. I'd like to know who we're using.
Okay, well, then I support your suggestion.
So we would need a motion to table this to the next meeting.
I think we, do we have to vote on the first motion?
Oh. Okay, so we will vote on the motion to approve. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion is voted down.
Now, I'd like to entertain a motion that we remove this item, consider it during the November 18th board meeting with more specifics on what firms we use, who we don't use, and the firms that have been vetted through us.
Is there any discussion on the new motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, we are now on to new number four, consideration approval of certified substitute rates. Dr. Bales.
President Greenberg, governing board members, this is the first of two items that begin to address two of our most critical issues negatively impacting our daily operations. Lack of certified substitute teachers and nurses impacts the safety and instruction for our children. When our teachers give up prep periods to cover vacancies and absences, it impacts their ability to plan, assess, and communicate with parents and colleagues in a timely manner. Ms. Barrigan will provide the recommendation for Dr. Holmes tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Bales and President Greenberg, governing board members. Thank you, Dr. Bales and President Greenberg, governing board members. Typically, in a normal year, our fill rate for our substitutes accepting positions for existing teacher absences is around 90%. This year, that rate has dropped significantly and is very frequently less than 70%. We do know that the pandemic has had an impact on substitutes who are willing to work in schools during this time, but pay is also certainly a factor. And we are recognizing that other districts around us have jumped significantly in their daily substitute pay rate. So with that market research, it's indicated an increase that the daily rates would improve in fill rate. And I think as well that this would additionally improve the teacher working conditions because they are currently regularly filling uncovered vacancies during their prep period, and they are compensated for that. The proposal is to move the substitute teacher daily rate from the current $112 to a proposed $140. The substitute teacher long-term rate from the current $140 to the proposed $165. And then the substitute nurse daily rate from $112 to the proposed $160. This recommendation is projected to be approximately cost neutral because the teachers would not be filling in for their prep period and compensated for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mrs. Case, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Does anybody have any questions or comment? Mrs. Brown?
The, I have a couple, I have a comment, but I also have a question. The question, did you say that this, the teachers that are filling in are compensated for that? Okay, good, that's, that's good. And I, I have spoken to many, many teachers that need, you know, I think we need to do this for sure, especially if it's cost neutral. But I do worry about our teachers and the stress and the amount and what it adds to them, regardless of whether they're getting pay for, for filling in. It is just an additional, just stress on an already impossible time. And so if this is a way that we can support them, then I'm all for it.
Mrs. Case?
Also, I believe that our surrounding districts have increased their pay, and so we're trying to attract more, and that's good. But as Mrs. Brown said, the teachers have been under enormous stress and we don't need to add to it. And if this can help, I'm all for it.
I also support this. I think, you know, our, we have teachers emergency substituting every single day. And despite compensation, it's still a drain on their ability to do their job. And so I appreciate that, that we're doing this, and hopefully we'll get that fill rate back up to 90%.
So Matura?
Right, I, I also agree with Ms. Bacon that I do hope that this will help with our fill rate. If we can get back to up to 90%, that would be fantastic. And a reminder out there that we are looking for substitute teachers, and now the pay may be going up. So please get, get out there, we're looking for people.
Thank you, Mrs. Matura. Yeah, I appreciate Ms. Barrigan, Dr. Holmes, Dr. Bales for taking the lead on this. And I hope, as everybody else has said, that this does get our fill rate up, but more importantly, gives our teachers their prep periods back. And that time is critical, and we all know that. So if there are no further comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda, consideration approval of new MOU. Dr. Bales?
President Greenberg, governing board members, this is the second reading for the new course catalog and revisions. And Doc, my apologies. This one. Thank you. As I mentioned, two items very critical to our daily operations would be mentioned tonight, and this is the second. Transporting our students safely by bus is a top priority. The lack of drivers and the overall labor shortage has created delays in getting students to school and home in a reasonable amount of time. This item, as well as a previous item, do not suggest that we are without challenges in other areas. We do have a 25% vacancy rate across all hourly positions. I wish I could recommend salary increases for all our employees. We have critical needs in special education paraprofessionals, bus aides, before and after school care associates, and nurses too. Our budgeting process is beginning to develop for the next year, and we hope to address these areas also. We simply cannot do it all at once. Ms. Barrigan will provide the recommendation for this item.
Thank you, Dr. Bales, President Greenberg, and governing board members. As we have been very frequent in sharing, we are experiencing unprecedented challenges related to our vacancies in the transportation department. And transporting our nine to 10,000 students per day on usually approximately 55% of what we would expect or would need to have to operate typically for our driver positions is certainly a challenge. And I don't know of another time that there has been a department or a school that has operated at 55% of the staffing that they need. And it's extremely challenging. And our bus drivers and everyone in our transportation department is doing an absolutely incredible job, and we appreciate the work that they do. They regularly drive routes beyond their assignments and different from what they have bid according to the bargaining agreement that we have with our staff. It has additionally caused our routers and our dispatchers to set aside their regular responsibilities so that they can drive, and then office staff does the routing and the dispatching in their place. And so in order to transport our students safely and to address the significant need that is causing daily, daily operational effects to our students and to our staff, we recommend that the governing board approve a hard-to-fill recruitment and retention addenda for all current and future transportation employees who perform the function of driver, router, trainer, or dispatcher in the amount of $15 per day, beginning November 28th, 2021, and going through May 26th, 2022. As I view the budget now, I expect to use ESER III funding for this resource if it is approved this evening. Though as this year and next year's budget situation progresses, that may change, we may move that to MNO. The projected cost will not exceed $220,000. And that's if we were to be fully staffed by November 28th, which I will cross my fingers for, and all of those positions were filled through May, May 26th. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Barrigan. Ms. Case, may I have a motion? Does any member of the board, Mrs. Matura?
I have a question, and I, and I don't know if you have the answer, especially with Dr. Holmes not here, and, but perhaps someone can let me know. So right now, we're working with a staff of 55% fill rate for bus drivers. I'm assuming we're not usually at 100% because we tend to not be 100% in anything. There's always shifting going on throughout the district. But is there an awareness of what we traditionally would be at?
Mrs. Matura, President Greenberg, over the last five years, as the Assistant Super HR, I can tell you that we've, we've continued to struggle filling these. And we typically have had anywhere between 12 and 15 vacancies, not 37. So we're, we're three times, you know, two and a half to three times as many vacancies this year in this department than we have been over the last five years as an average.
Thank you. And I do know this is a national issue. I hear about this from my siblings across the country, that they're, they're having bus driver vacancies all across the country. So I, I know that it's a dire situation everywhere. I'm glad we're able to address that this evening. And I also appreciated hearing from you that we're looking at other hard-to-fill departments and positions that we, that we, there's so many needed people. Everyone in our district is very needed, very valued, very important to keep everything rolling. And the amount of work people are putting in right now to go above and beyond, just to keep things moving, I'm so impressed with our staff, our teachers, our, all of our positions. And I'm happy to be supportive of everyone in any way we can to keep things moving. And so I do appreciate we have this, this evening, and glad we're looking for more ways to, to be able to help other areas. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Matura. I think it's appropriate to, you know, thank our board for continuing to support our initiatives in this district, our MNO override elections and such, because it is difficult. We, we are very much in control of our expenditures. We are not in control of our revenues. And so that's difficult, especially when we know that we're looking at 5.3% inflation, and yet, you know, the state budget provided 1.2%. So those are challenges that we have to solve when we don't have control over revenues. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment as well, that I appreciate what Ms. Matura said, and I know that we have often spoken about supporting in, in our employees and, and doing what we can. But we also, our students first, and we do know that this really is, the bottom line is supporting kids and their education. And I, you know, I really do also value what, what Ms. Matura said.
Mrs. Bacon?
I'm, think this is a great first step in trying to, to address these issues. I think, you know, we have to be thoughtful. You know, Dr. Bales mentioned in his comments that we have a potential $35 million budget cut. So it just boggles the mind how we're going to be able to transport students. You know, the major part of our budget is salaries and benefits. 86% of our daily budget is salaries and benefits. So when you have to cut 35 million, there's not much outside of that that can be, that can be cut. So, but I 100% support this. I hope that we get relief from the state so that we don't have to make those kinds of cuts. It will be painful, it will be ugly, and it will affect students without a doubt. But our staff is incredible. They are working hard. They are doing everything that they can. And the vast majority of our employees are so committed to students and doing what's right for students, and that I appreciate. And getting kids to school on time is part of that. And hopefully, more bus drivers will allow that to happen. So, thank you.
And I volunteer my pay. Oh, wait. Thanks, Mrs. Brown. Thank you, Mrs. Bacon. Ms. Case, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Here is hoping this helps. Next on the agenda is second read of the proposed new courses and revisions for the high school course catalog for next year. Dr. Bales?
Thank you, President Greenberg, governing board members. As you mentioned, a second public reading for your consideration. Dr. Corson will present the updated recommendations, and we will seek your approval.
Good evening, President Greenberg, members of the board, Dr. Bales, cabinet and guests. Tonight is the second reading of the high school course recommendation additions and revisions for the 22-23 school year. As a reminder, these additions include a new integrated science course, new CTE courses in healthcare pathways, construction technologies in Space Force JROTC, a new freshman connections course, and several new courses in advanced PE. We also have, are making recommendations to change the high school English language development courses to align with state language. We do request approval from you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Corson. Ms. Case, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Does any member of the board have any questions or comments?
I do. Ms. Bacon? Just, I'll just start. I really appreciate the integrated science. As a parent of a student who is applying to colleges right now, and talking to my friends whose kids are applying to colleges right now, the idea that their students may not have favorable grades in certain science classes, it is nice to have other options that if a child isn't necessarily spectacular in science, because I do believe that there are multiple things you can be good at without necessarily having to get, have three, like physics, chemistry, and biology. So I really value that. And I also value the CTE courses a great deal. I, I think that we've always had them, of course, but I, I just appreciate any addition to, to that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Any other member of the board wish to, any comment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is ratification of the annual financial report for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Dr. Bales?
President Greenberg, governing board members, this item is intentionally placed here for you as an approval item to continue to operate with transparency. Ms. Barrigan will present.
Thank you, Dr. Bales and President Greenberg and governing board members. The need tonight for the annual financial report is to be ratified. This was approved in the October, the first October board meeting. But in that time, we noticed a correction that we were able to make prior to the deadline of October 15th. So we did meet the required deadline of posting that to ADE before October 15th, but just need to bring it to the board so that the version that ADE has matches the version that the board has approved. The, the correction to be made was in the maintenance and operation fund, and that's why you see the little R next to the 212, 212.3 million dollar number. That's the number that was revised down. And prior to the upload, we were made aware and noticed an $18 million medical prepay that was recorded differently in our former financial accounting software known as B+ The process for that is different in our new financial accounting software, but we implemented the same process in Visions. And so as we move into the new accounting software, we are learning some things and how they process differently, and this was one of those sets of circumstances. While it's a small portion, $18 million of our half-billion-dollar budget, it's still significant and important for me to share that information with you tonight. This is something I should have cut sooner or prior to bringing it to the board on the October 7th board meeting, but we did notice it before it was uploaded to ADE and met the submission deadline with the corrected version. And just again, as everyone continues to get used to the new accounting software, there are some positive things that has helped us to find. And as I've mentioned before, it's the accounting software that I think 99, if not 100% of other districts now use in the state of Arizona. So first of all, it puts us in a position of having, having other districts to reach out to when we have a question about something or a best practice on how to do something. It also opens up our pool for, if we have a position opening, we have folks who may already know that if we are able to pull them away from another district. Additionally, we have noticed in the closeout for the year that our compensated absences from B+ were understated, and Visions was able to bring that to light. So we now are able to correct and provide a, an accurate number for our compensated absences. Additionally, the transaction trail within the Visions system is far better than B+. It has an audit trail of the who made a transaction, what transaction was made, and when that transaction was made. And then finally, and perhaps the most exciting for us that are in the finance area, is that it is not promised, but very likely to eliminate the cash handling, single audit finding that we have had in our audits for the last five ongoing years. And that started as a significant deficiency. Then for three years, it moved to a material weakness, which is meaning more serious, a more serious finding on the single audit. Last year, it was moved back to a significant deficiency, and this year, for fiscal year 21, it looks promising that it will no longer be a finding on our single audit. And so again, moving in divisions has helped us to uncover those and correct those items. This is the pie that I showed when I presented on the AFR last time, and just changing of the breakout a little bit. It obviously has decreased that employee benefit portion. So with the two of those, still our salaries and benefits are about in the 85% range where they typically are for our school district. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Barrigan. Ms. Case, may we have a motion? And I'm, sorry, so moved. Was your hand up for a question as well?
I, I have a comment. My comment is, you know, sometimes mistakes are made or things are changed, and what I appreciate is the honesty that comes forth and, and brings it to light. And I appreciate that has happened now, and, and you explained why. And I just think that is kudos for, to you and to our district for being honest. you and to our district for being honest about something that went on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bacon?
I also value the transparency and, and, you know, I'm sure that there are some employees who are a little on the upset side that this had to come before us, but we're nothing if not a learning environment, so I appreciate the transparency and I hope we'll be very careful as we move forward.
Thank you.
Mrs. Matura?
And just a clarification, this, this is just, no additional money was spent that we didn't know about, this was just the way it was being shown in the charts, but there's no additional funding or less funding, it was just the way it was being showed in the financials?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? I just want to echo my thanks, and I am glad we, we are able to discuss and bring it forward.
Thank you.
All those in favor of ratification of the updated report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is consideration approval of award RFP 2201 PB. Dr. Bales?
President Greenberg and governing board members, this item is presented as an example of some real creativity to generate a little bit of revenue as a leader on the procurement through One GPA. Ms. Barrigan, would you please present?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bales, President Greenberg, and governing board members. As I shared a little bit earlier, there are a lot of benefits to working with a cooperative contracting agency, and in this case, One GPA. We're able to receive the pricing that they're able to offer because they're, they have really a national umbrella, not just here in Arizona, and when a vendor knows that they have that many people that are potentially going to purchase off of the contracts that they put together, they're able to offer much better, what they call the cooperative pricing. But in addition to that, when we act as the lead agency, and we have about 20 contracts that we act as the lead agency on with One GPA in particular, we have a revenue share that's generated from the other school districts or agencies that use that contract, and that's because we do put in a little bit extra work to be the lead agency. So just as an example of what we receive in that, first quarter check this year was in the amount of $17,441. In fiscal year 20, which was kind of a more typical year, although at the end, we trailed off a little bit, we made just under $81,000 for that, and fiscal year 21 was a little bit less, at $77,000. But it does provide us an opportunity to get a little bit creative and work to bring in some revenue, because as Dr. Bales very accurately pointed out, we do not have very many opportunities to be able to increase revenues, that is stated to us in a statutory formula, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barrigan. Mrs. Case, may we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Does anybody have any questions or, Mrs. Matura?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Barrigan. Do you know approximately how many districts are involved in One GPA? Is that something, and it's a national group?
It is. Mrs. Matura, I was able to check with Mrs. Kayas, our Director of Purchasing this evening, and there are 299 agencies, most of which are school districts in the state of Arizona that participate with One GPA or are members of One GPA, and then nationally, that number is just under 1,050.
So all of those different agencies, they now can use a contract that-
Yes.
-that we've come up with, and they are able to do that without going through all of the work and process on their own?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Last on the list is acceptance of gifts and donations. As always, we appreciate all of our donors. We've got a rather long list this time, and I just want to note a few donations we received. The Wonderful Company Foundation gave $1,000 to fourth grade at Copper Canyon. Snooze Eatery gave $1,300 for the garden club at Indian School, and the Thunderbirds Foundation gave $1,000 for girls golf and $1,000 for boys golf at Horizon High School, at PV, and then another $1,000 for boys golf at Shadow Mountain, and the Horizon High School Boosters Husky Cross Country Group gave more than $5,600 for track at Horizon. So again, we thank all of our donors. If anybody is here, please accept our thanks in person, and Mrs. Case, may we have a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to the end of our agenda. I hope anybody who's thinking about going under the sea, heads over to Shadow Mountain this weekend, and Mrs. Case may have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.